I am Ruthina Malone. I currently serve on the Iowa City Community School District School Board. I first got elected in twenty seventeen. Um, so if I'm successful on November fourth, it will be kind of short because nobody's crazy enough to do that many times. But um, I've served already eight years uh, and the last two and a half years I've been board president. So as part of not campaigning, but um, communication and staying in touch with families, especially with some of the concerns that you probably saw um, surrounding violence in classrooms, meeting with families that have concerns and questioning about their children. Um, but in my paid world, I am the department administrator for psychological brain sciences. Um, so I have been doing that since twenty thirteen. And it's most of you probably know as grad students, we do it all because the faculty CEO can turn over. Um, but we are the ones that make sure that the department keeps functioning, running, and everybody plays along nicely.
Yeah, and Zach Demko is on our coordinating committee, could not be here tonight, but has a lot of good things to say about you.
Um, I love our grad students. I mean, because I I hope that they um, view me as someone that I recognize that they are pretty free and what we pay doesn't. I was a grad student a long time ago. I'm like, I don't know how we still pay what we pay and expect our um, student, I will probably use the word kids, because like, I'm old enough to be your mom, so. So if I, it's not to be. I am making sure that um, our grad students are treated fairly and heard. Um, so, I I love working with our grad students, not meaning students in general, but our grad students who some of them.
Did you know Junie from physics was, she was the department admin there who hired me in? But I actually, she's left the summer before I started.
Now, I mean, in physics?
Yeah.
You know Heather?
Yeah, she's she was, she's our.
And before Heather was um.
Oh, yeah, we, you emailed him some. I don't know if you.
Didn't realize that's the same guy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, like, fine, good time.
Yeah, but I.
Okay, I think Junie was like.
She was the grad student coordinator.
Yeah, the grad.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, it it's one of the staff people, so I don't get to talk with a lot of staff people in other departments. It's usually Heather, um, especially for the natural sciences, we we just share best practices as much as possible. Or when run into an issue, especially usually with a CEO, they're like, what? And it's like, we can't do what I said. It's like, what's worst they can do is the champagne league.
So for this, we're going to move into just some general questions that I've sent everybody out a list of short questions. Do like two, three minute responses. Um, you've already sort of been talking about this, but first one is just what experiences do you bring up with the mission?
Sure. Um, like I said, I've been doing it for eight years. I uh, am one of the most senior board members, the only one seated at the table that has been at the table for eight years. So I've seen a lot in the organization. Um, my day job with supervising staff and even though technically we're not listed as supervisors, but faculty too, because I'm often the one that you you direct. Um, retrain, have tough conversations, and more being a school board member, our only employee is superintendent. And what I've seen is it is very difficult for a school board member to serve as somebody supervisor if they're. So having that experience of not only working with faculty, but also have a staff of about twelve that I supervise in our department, um, and knowing how to have tough conversations, evaluate performance. That comes in handy um, when dealing with a superintendent and having conversations and trying to get the other six board members to frame their relationship in a similar manner. Um, my experience in finance, uh, before I came on the side of the weather, I was the um, finance person in the graduate medical education office over on the hospital side. And that's the office that runs oversee all of the residents and fellow programs. So that budget was, what else? Almost a hundred million. Wow. So um, I did that for six years. So having that experience, it was like maybe almost daily in doing this.
Yeah, for sure.
And being married to a school teacher. So.
Yeah.
Experience, and I mean, it's which is really helpful because I could not do what he does. I I just, I I can't. I would probably couldn't be a teacher, but having a teacher in the house um, and sort of allowing me to reframe some of the things I think about. And it's like, that's not how that works. And that comes in handy a lot, too.
Yeah. Moving on to the next question, if you were reelected, what are your immediate policy priorities?
Looking at uh, how we handle uh, discipline, discipline children in our buildings. Um, as you've probably seen online, the article about violence that some of our teachers are experiencing. Um, and but what's not said in that is that oftentimes uh, it's a high frequency of students conceding special issues. And so I want to ensure that we are working not only with our students, but with our families and staff to provide the best services. So we're not seeing constant repeated patterns. So that's a huge priority, um, because it's just, it's a epidemic across the country. We are, it's not operating in isolation here. And ICCSD, and I want to ensure that we don't end up criminalizing students. So that's a high priority and making sure that um, we stay competitive because vouchers is a huge risk to so many districts. Luckily, Iowa City has been fortunate for the last couple of years. We've actually gained students. It's not what you see across the state. Um, I also serve on a state school board and a lot of those other board of directors are from rural areas and hearing them having to consolidate districts because they're losing kids in rural districts. My biggest concern is eventually it will come to Iowa City, but I want to make us one of those districts um, look into ways that people look at us and say, they don't offer that. Iowa City has done something unique. Iowa City has um, one of the programs, uh, House Right of Fashion.
Yeah.
At one of our high schools and it's a design program that's teaching our children um, through computer-based work, how to design clothes. So that's unique. No other school district is offering.
Yeah, I get those emails, but they didn't realize what.
That's like on South Gilbert?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's him, and he actually comes into one of our um, high schools and teaches uh, courses with three other colleagues.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, and and they also, they did the stuff for the Iowa City Community Security. They let them put that on the property, so.
Yeah, they do a lot, but for the districts, that's like, that's one of the things that they offer that makes us unique, that you will not see um, in other, like, in Kirkwood. They don't offer that. So I want to make sure that we remain competitive with our private school um, part people and especially Iowa City because we're competing with Virginia with the same number of kids.
Yeah, for sure. Moving on to third, what is your plan to address intrusions from the state and the Trump administration?
Um, so one of the biggest things, yes, um, I I I am a person that I would never ask our teachers or administration to do anything that will um, jeopardize their livelihood. Because I'm elected, they can't do anything to me. But um, if I ask our teachers to do anything that goes against whatever law that they pass, they will, they have said they will come and take their license. So my, what I do is I call it out that is this something that we would normally do as a district? Absolutely not. We are being forced to do that. Does that put a target on us oftentimes with the state? Absolutely. We are a target now because of um, the article that was online and uh, the fact that we added back into our policy, the gender inclusive rate. But that's something that the board we can do and they can only make our lives miserable, but they can't come after our super because we are directing them to do that. And it's not breaking a law.
Yeah, I'm not super supposed to ask a follow-up questions, but are the main things that you're seeing from the state and the Trump administration surround, like what sort of things are you doing and trying?
Probably similar to what uh, you experienced as graduate students. They have um, cut off funding that we were approved for. Um, that runs some of our uh, before and after school programs and some of the schools that absolutely need that it's Title Nineteen funding. We were supposed to get it back in July, that small portion of it. We still have to provide them services and sort of keep our fingers crossed that it will come eventually. So they're reviewing budgets and um, when our, when we reach out to the state board of education, they always say, oh, it's not that you don't get the funding, but you don't have it. So those type of things, messing with funding.
Nice.
And so although we set our budget, that's always in the back of our head, like if it does not come, what do I have to cut?
Kind of related to this, all our academic freedom is a little bit more of a grad student thing, but how are you going to work to preserve teacher autonomy in the classroom kind of during these challenging political times?
That comes up every school year. I get an email from a teacher asking, um, is it safe for me to still teach the truth? And it's like, absolutely. We have teaching standards. We set expectations as a board. We want you to teach the truth. That's, that's what's out there. And so as a board, we will protect you with our curriculum because it's directed that you will teach American history. That includes slavery. There is no around, there, there's no way to teach American history without talking about that. Um, so uh, having those conversations and one of the things that I, over the last eight years, I've built a relationship with teachers throughout our history that I'm more than willing to come to classroom and listen to um, their lessons or have that conversation and reassure that as long as I'm sitting at the table, I will be that boy saying, no, absolutely. Our teachers are doing what they're supposed to be doing. They are preparing our kids to go into the real world.
Wish we got that from the university. Moving on.
Yeah.
What steps will you take to support and engage with the unionized workforce that you oversee?
One of the things that um, I am really proud of for our board and the unions is the relationship. Um, and if we talk to the president of the teacher union, he will say, even in the last ten years, the relationship has greatly improved. And I know when I joined the board, uh, one of the first things that we had to do was rewrite all of our policies because they were all over the place. And um, I was like, Brady has to be at the table. He's the union president and he oversees several, works with several of our staff units. And I don't think he ever had such an active role at the table where it wasn't that you had to wait to be called on. It was like, it's an act of discussion, even if it's not pertaining to um, teachers per se, if we're dealing with a policy that deals with, I don't know, with something um, dress code, I still want to hear from your perspective as a teacher and what you think other teachers might have to say. Give us that feedback. And he still has that active role. Personally, I want to, I'm one of the only board members in the last eight years that visits our buildings when it's not an election season for me because I don't go in when it's election because that's just, that makes everybody feel weird. Um, but I go when I'm not campaigning, um, because I want to see how my decisions impact our student. And that gives me an opportunity to talk with parents, secretaries, with teachers, with students, um, to get their perspective of, you know, this pay sucks. How am I supposed to pay my bills when I go get a job at Walmart making way more than what you're paying your parent? And we worked on um, raising those wages, not where we want them to be, but we have made steady improvement in those wages for some of our lowest paid staff.
It's really, really good. Um, what would you say your budgetary priorities for your school district would be in this upcoming year? What adjustments would you make if they?
Um, I have always been one that I'm protective of people. I have to protect my neighbors, my people I have to run into at the grocery store. I um, am not one that would cut, want to cut positions over something else. One of the hardest decisions that um, we had to make that caused a lot of anxiety was total school over cutting positions. And although it impacted that town, I couldn't bring myself to cut positions because then that's a report that blew out our district that we will see more larger class time in almost every single building. So um, teaching positions are not easy to get where they're making uh, realistically livable wage. Iowa City is one of the top districts that we pay our teachers very well. Um, I think the only other districts ahead of us is Des Moines, Pink Waterloo, and then us. Because we value getting great teachers in the system. So that's one of the priorities of making sure that we have the budget that there's some other things that we can focus on and not the people. And sometimes that means um, we, our superintendent get told, I need you to do more with less. I mean, over the last, I think, five years, he's had to cut six positions just at where he sit. Out at his like central headquarters because we want to protect the folks that's in our classrooms, in our.
All right. Um, moving on a little bit to education related. Um, what do you think the ideal role of technology in the classroom is? Because this is something I can complain about as a TA.
So what do you mean by technology? Are you talking about cell phones or?
It'd be cell phones and the use of technology in the classroom. Like are we, are we, what do we think about Chromebooks and take home? Taking those home and all that.
So um, we changed our policy recently because we heard from families that um, you know, my kid doesn't need to bring their Chromebook home and kindergarten are taking their Chromebook home. Oftentimes they're not getting it back. Charge. You're not getting it back. I mean, they don't wear it daily. They forget it. So uh, if it's a lesson that it's needed for, then that teacher has to go borrow another. So K through five, those Chromebooks stay home on last parent sign off saying, my kid should bring it home and I'm going to make sure they're going to take it back. But they're kept on cards in um, the schools. I think that's a fantastic policy. Um, we have some people in the community that think that that means our kids are on computer screens all the time throughout the day. And what I usually tell even my fellow directors, have you ever been in a classroom to see how it seems? Because I have, and for kindergartners, maybe I've seen it used the most, probably about twelve, fifteen minutes. And it was for um, a language arts lab. It's not something that our kids have stand at a computer screen all day. I think it's important that we teach our kids how to properly use um, and sort of self-regulate themselves on screens because by not doing that, we're not setting them up for the next stage. I deal with undergrads now that it's like, what do you mean? You don't know how to do an Excel, what? Or I I literally, I, it it it, I'm like, what, what were you doing in high school? So if if we don't have that, that's what we send to you all. The other piece, cell phones in um, schools, the state, move, whatever. They did a mandate that every K through twelve had to have a cellphone policy. We were already working on ours. Ours is already um, with our unions because that was one of the things that I'm very much a fan of that realistically put policies in place that our uh, staff can say, yeah, that will work. I feel comfortable enforcing that. I feel comfortable enough following that. Because if I'm going to ask the adult who's the role model to enforce a policy, I'm going to ask you to follow as much as possible. And our staff was totally fine with that because they were having that conversation with us on what makes sense. Now, some people say our policy does not go far enough because it's not what they call a bail-to-bail policy. And that means from the first bail of the day, cell phones are not seen until the last bail of the day. To me, you can't go that far that bad. And so we started off with um, a policy that students can still use at uh, lunchtime, passing time, and there's certain zones in the building and it's only six through twelve. Elementary school, they should not have lunch outs using this. Who do you call the creator? So it's, that's in reminding families that help us help your kid. Don't, don't call them. Because that's the biggest issue. Like, most of the time the validator is, my mom is calling me, I have to answer it. It's like, you've taken it. But I kick you on. It's like, I, when we were making the policy, we heard from parents, well, I paid a bill. You can't tell my kid not to use them. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think there's a place for technology, um, because as educators, we have to get our kids ready for the next stage in life. And if we don't, then they don't know how to behave within. They started using it incorrectly, and that's our role.
Right. Another progressive victory in Iowa, Colleen. Hi. Uh, and.
Yes.
So I would want to ask, how is the Iowa City Community School District addressing post-pandemic learning challenges? Do you think you're making progress? What are some things that you would move to do as a parent or want to continue living in this board?
Biggest thing is mental health services for students um, and our staff because that lived into a pandemic and everything else that's been, I mean, it's very traumatic for everybody involved. And so we have seen an increased number of students dealing with multiple uh, mental health um, signs and issues. And so as a district um, under our board leadership, we have youth funding that we could spare in creating spaces where our students can sort of uh, go to deregulate if they know that they're being um, getting to the point where they're being overwhelmed. We call them like nest spaces. And it's um, large spaces like this, but it has different feeding options. There's usually um, adults in a room. Oftentimes, faculty students that need those clinical training hours and counseling. So if a student wants to talk, they can talk it through. But also counselors from the building, um, and staff from the building are in there just to check if a student want to talk it through or if they just need to meditate and get themselves back in the right mindset to go back to class. Um, trying to figure out how to get our kids back on track educationally. Because there was a lot of learning loss happening um, during the pandemic. Because realistically, online does not work for them. It just doesn't. Um, and kids weren't getting what they needed. So trying to see what we can do as a district to provide that additional support um, and different ways to sort of measure their improvement because standardized tests are not it for every kid. And I always share with people, I'm one of those kids that it, I I would freeze up. And I had to take my ACT exam three times because the first time got like, it was fifteen. I'm like, I'll take it. Okay, that's okay. But by the time I was done, it was a better score. I was sitting at twenty-eight. Because, but I'm, it's not for everybody. So we have to figure out ways that we allow our kids to show what they know. And it's not just on like final assessment or ACT exams. It's other forms of measuring that our district is um, working as a, with our curriculum.
Yeah, I, for a writing intensive discipline or somebody who's doing that, like, they can't A, B, C, D, history.
Yeah, it it doesn't work for everybody. And I think um, that's hard for people to accept that not every kid's knowledge base or smartness can be measured on that SAT or SAT thing.
And kind of last concept question is what distinguishes you from others who are running in this race?
Um, I can't say that I am the only candidate where the other four people that's not up for election all asked me to run again. I was adamant that I was done, so much so that I told people to throw away all my campaign stuff from the past campaign. Because honestly, I mean, it's a lot of work. It's it's a lot of work. Um, we are the only elected office that do not get any type of financial stipend in the state. The only one. Even, I mean, give me fifty bucks, nothing. We get nothing. Um, and to do this job well, you're looking at anywhere from ten to twenty hours a week on top of my full-time job. So I waited until my, I only have one child and she grew up here in Iowa City. I waited till she was a senior. She's like, I don't care what you do, just don't embarrass me. So she was fine. She operated well. My husband um, looks like I just go along for the ride. And because I don't drive, so he literally goes along, drives here. Um, but that's, that, that's the piece where um, I thought they were just pulling my leg. They were like, no, your leadership skill, eat it at the board table. Um, the other thing that distinguishing me and like, somebody in the community said, I should be using this to raise bait. It damn straight I am. I'm the only candidate of color. If I'm not reelected, we will have a totally white group. We cannot have no diversity overseeing our school. Not saying that every black person has the same lived experience as I do or, or I know the experience that um, Native American or Hispanic or Asian do, but pretty damn close than most. Because even the way I'm treated as one of the seven important, it's good. Last eight years, we would get messages. Mine would be a little bit different. A little bit different.
Yeah.
Um, and point that I just got tired of pointing it out. Then like, what that does go good, I still get it. So that's one of the things that I think is important. Um, in having that experience. In having that experience, when I deal with kids that come in that do not look like the other ones. And that reassurance, I have had um, cause we have elementary school kids and high school kids come in sometimes. Into the board and they're nervous because they're like, oh, these adults, they make the rule. The amount of time I've had kids say, well, that's a black person, you're a parent, which you're in charge. Like, yep, I get the control of the meeting. We don't go until I say we're moving on. And that has meant a lot to our kids. That's meant a lot to families. And I thought it was important enough that I tried to improve others because I truly wanted to step back. Um, is I think it's important to turn over leadership roles to the next generation of leaders. Nobody wanted. People will not sign up for this. I mean, I came close, but um his family is really young and was still working on his PhD. And so he's like, catch me next time. But I I have talked to so many. And I I would have to say my relationship with um buildings, teachers and staff. Like I said, I'm the only one that actually go into our build. This is somebody that does not drive. So I spend my own money often time to get from my job to Uber to a building. And get back because it's important to do that. They need to see um folks that's making the decisions and the policies. In the building, asking a question and seeing how does this play out realistically.
Um, last question, if people wanna get involved with you. What's the best way to get involved with the campaign?
Um, I'm on Facebook. Uh. I think it's. Director. Um, my campaign Gmail account is Lufina before. At gmail dot com.
It's the four spelled out versus the number?
No, it's four, four spelled out, F O R. Um, because I am an elected official, you can probably find my cell phone number online. And I work at the university. A lot of people do that. It's it's common. I've had people call and say. I should not put this in an email and it's been people where I'm like, dude. Okay, what? Can I get a yard sign? Yes, of course, absolutely. But I'm also leaving um some material here. You guys, it just gives you um some informational background and just the priorities.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time. We can maybe take like two or three follow-up questions. I know you've.
Waiting for me, so.
Yeah, I mean.
So. Um, one of my biggest concerns with technology in the classroom is with um is with AI. Um, I I very much like, so, cause I just graduated West High and I saw the massive improvements with um cell phones. Uh after they were essentially just banned from the classrooms. It was very, very good to just see like students paying attention in class and actually learning. Um, I I do worry though that AI still is very prevalent in those classrooms. And I can see it doing a lot of damage and especially as those students go into college, it's a habit that they form and continue on. Into more intense classes where it can't actually help them as much here. What would you be able to do? What would you be willing to do to mitigate that problem?
So one of the things that we um actually just started, I believe, last year. Is educating our staffers on AI because that's one of the biggest um issues a lot of our staff. But what teachers, what is that? So making sure there's funding there. Um, and we just had a board presentation this past Tuesday on AI in our classrooms. Where they have curriculum going as young as kindergarten. Talking to students about AI can be a great tool, but it also takes away um your creativity. Um, your ability to actually learn. And I'm like, how do you teach a kindergarten at that? And it was pretty cool because it was uh with uh art. That they had a kid draw like decisions on landscape pictures and then they put it through after that, what he called it. And AI fixed it, but it took away a lot of the uniqueness of the drawing to make it what. They thought it should be. Um, they also are now working six through twelve, going over the lessons of. There's appropriate times to use AI and let us teach you how to do that. It's not to write your whole paper. Um, it's to sort of, um, they're using it. I forgot. To help sort of edit things, like you have to provide your own thoughts. And they can offer you suggestions on how to clean that up, how to make it work.
Great. Like one other, yeah.
So thanks for coming to talk to us. I just wanted to ask, like, I do grew up here and I also don't have kids. So I'm like sort of disconnected from Iowa City school stuff in a like direct way. But of course, I still live here and it's still my city and my community, so there's not, but like, I just wanted to. I guess ask you like, what are the best ways that we can get people involved in this election if they're in my sort of circumstances? Or they're like, I'm just here, but they are registered voters.
Yeah, I would say um find out who's running, reach out to them. See if they're willing to sit down with you one-on-one. Um, and it's funny because even Zach was like, wait. I don't have kids. I'm like Zach, you live in Iowa City, she was registered to vote here. And this. The school district impacts you because if we don't have great schools that attracts faculty here. That reduces the number of interested students we need. And so talking to him, like, we, we, we need our students to be invested um because. Having good public schools makes a community thrive.
You got your students too.
Yep.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, so and you can watch our board meetings. All of our board meetings um are online. Um, depending on how wordy they are, it's usually a quick turnaround. Um, but if it's a lot of people talking and yelling at us, it takes sometimes a week. The that's if we have, like, a lot of people come out for community comment or heavy on presentations. Like this meeting we had on Tuesday, if it's not up today, it should be up by tomorrow. And our agendas are posted publicly. Our meetings are open to anybody. So I would say start by watching and you'll see some of uh. Things we talk about and it would be really great just as college students say, well, you know, as a graduate of ICCSD. You kind of missed the mark here. So where can just offering up suggestions and believe it or not, I hear from. Current and former students on what we have missed the mark on and what we can improve. And I always like to say when they complain that they're gra- graduating in June. Like, but didn't you enjoy having a forty weekend in October?
Is there a candle on my question?
Oh, yeah, yeah.